Five o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll call.
Mr. Caparosa.
Here.
Mr. Livermore.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Mr. I know. Mr. Seaver.
The allegiance, really start a thought.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as for all.
First call for brief public comment.
Trevor Case, Rock River Township. I was going through your guys' rec plan. Everything looks really good. It looks like somebody put a heck of a lot of effort into that. And I know how tedious those are. There may have been one small oversight. I just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention, so maybe we can get it added since it's a draft only. There is a park that wasn't included. It's the publicly owned park in the village. It's called Centennial Park. It's owned by the township. The Lions Club actually bought it and then donated it to the township for the for public use. And it's just got some parking lots there and a couple of outhouses and some, you know, some lunch tables, you know, for people that stop and have their lunch, you know, and some of the people that take their lunch in town tend to use that as their as their regular, because whenever we're ramping in the trashes, it's always the exact same thing. So the trash is everything. So we have consistent users using it, and it also is the access to the Hungarian Falls, the walk back to the falls. So it is a cute little park and it's a nice park, and as a township, we keep that part up. So I'd be more than happy to get you guys a couple of pictures and a little write-up of it if that would help.
That'd be great, because I'm sure.
I'm sure it's a little over, because it's a small park.
Yeah, Julia from.
Too bad.
Too bad, is who has done most of the work, so.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can give us that, we'll send it to her.
Sure, who should I email to?
Joel.
Okay, I'm just gonna, a couple of pictures and like, who owns the park and what it's about, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, and then you guys can do what you need with that, and that way we can get that park added into the.
Yep, so there, just in case we need it someday.
Yes, right? Thank you, guys. That was my only comment there. Thank you.
Okay, I want to piggyback on that, too, because it's not just Centennial Park. So Centennial Park is a confusing one, because it's owned by the township, but it's in village property. And so that's confusing, but also the Eldra County Fairgrounds, according to the lease that is with the Lions Club to maintain all those buildings, they consider that to be a township-owned park as well, which does kind of change some of the things that are there as well. And then on top of that, there is not a single thing from Mathias Township in that red plant. So that includes the old BMX track, that includes the Lions Club Pavilion that they have for their Fourth of July Festival, the Little League Field, the ice rink, that's all down there in one facility. There is the questionable school parking lot slash park. That is not really sure if that's private or public, but people use it because the other parkings are the other park area that's got playground equipment on it is starting to kind of march under, and that's directly connected to DNR funds that are going on. So I know that some of these things aren't directly connected to rec plans, but I know that it seems like that entire part of it, it allows the park in Limestone Township is not not in it. Those three townships kind of got removed from it, and if there is going to be further development with any of this stuff or land swaps, I'm a little concerned about it, so. I was hoping to officially ask that you take that off the consent agenda and just make it an action item next week to make sure that all these things are kind of added. I, you know, it should be okay, given the timeline. It should be that favorite deal, but I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing anything with how that's going to go, because I know that there's already work with trying to update playground equipment in Rock River and at both the school campus, at Silver Central, and at the Fairground Campus. And if these things are wrong and they're basing that work on that, I don't want to see that work that they're doing get screwed up, so. We could just delay it up by maybe a week if you help him.
Again, anybody, just one hot second, right? Same thing, anything like that that's got mistly sent to Joel, so we can get it ordered. The folks are working on for us.
I'd like to add to his discussion. The the ball field and the little playground behind and the Lions Pavilion is all owned by the Lions Club, but on the front, closer to M sixty-seven, the community building is owned by the township, and then going west where the ice rink is usually, didn't happen this year because the ice wouldn't stay. They tried a couple of times, but that is owned by the township as as recreation, and I do believe that the township does own the parking lot and the playground. All the way, there's a there's a fence there, and they own all the way back to the water tank. That's all township property and had been, the playground there has been used for recreation. Then there's also the Lions Club Scott Park along the Scott Creek. There's outhouses and playground equipment and some picnic facilities there, which is west of west of the town proper, but but east of the Scott Park. And I was involved with some of the DNR funding, working to get that part got had some funding from the DNR, and there's a pavilion in the in the back for picnics and so on, and that's still placard with a with a DNR placard on it, so that's for sure recreation property in Mathias Township.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Kathy Pullen, I serve on the Altran Board. I have a letter I'd like to read concerning the state-proposed funding for all transportation systems. It's dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, from the Altran Eldra County Transit to Senator Ed McRae Public Transit Funding. Dear Senator Ed McRae, I write to you today to provide information for the upcoming House Appropriations Subcommittee on Transportation Discussions Regarding Public Transit Funding. The current budget recommendation for fiscal year twenty twenty-five would reduce local bus operating LDO funding by forty million dollars. This deep of a cut is a serious setback, risking serious reductions in service statewide and potentially the survival of many transit agencies going forward. The impact for Altran would be significant. Preliminary funding estimates from MDOT Office of Passenger Transportation reduces our funding nine point four percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. This equates to a ninety-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollar discount from our budget, which now creates a sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollar deficit. Nowhere in our budget is there ninety-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars to squeeze out without reducing staff and reduction of services. Transit is essential in our rural community. Most residents of Eldra County who use public transit have no other mode of transportation or accessible transportation. Altran transports the general public, students, seniors, persons with disabilities, and tourists to and from daily living activities, medical appointments, work, school, et cetera. I plead with you to support the fifty percent and sixty percent funding of eligible expenses allowed by Act Fifty-One of nineteen fifty-one. Sincerely, Altran Paige Eaton, Executive Director. This quote-unquote nine point four percent is actually a lot more. When you take away that, your eligible expense amount goes down. If you don't have eligible expenses, you lose more money. When you cut services, as Altran would have to do, you can't serve people after five o'clock. That cuts hours. That cuts revenue from transportation. You lose more. This is in effect, even with our local millage, going to represent at least a twenty-five percent loss for Altran. If anybody remembers school being closed last Wednesday, we had a client, a customer in Grand Marais who needed to go to Marquette for dialysis. She was picked up. She went to Marquette. She was taken home in near blizzard conditions. You don't buy that by cutting the budget. Funding for transportation of a public nature is part of the state constitution, and the current request is simply to maintain funding at last year's level. We're not trying to be greedy. We're not trying to expand. We are trying to keep Eldra County Transit Authority up and running on a regular basis. And I'd ask that you put those letters in the mailboxes for Nick and Dean.
Yep.
This is extraordinarily important. I have more information here. If you need it, you can contact Paige Eaton, or you can get in touch with me. Nine zero six four five two six six two nine. I'll be happy to meet with anybody. I'll be happy to get it to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, on to the agenda.
We're gonna take nine to five-year recreation plan and change that from being on this agenda today.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sure, anyways.
And as a side note, I did upload the version that didn't have the airport additions and then those tweets at the end. I pulled the the pre-final draft draft. So they want, they have to change it online. Just recently Bryce pointed out, it was missing. The airport section and the numbers are all different, so it's changed now, but.
Oh.
So that'll be the version.
It'll be the version Julia corrects again for itself.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
Yeah.
Like, which one are we doing?
Minutes, we do not have to go over, so Joel said they are online. Just forgot to send their individual copies and they'll send them tonight, so. Everybody will look them over for next week. Dulcey with our equalization report for.
Can I give some here?
Yep.
Just be a little bit easier than listening to me rattle through paperwork here.
So every year we go through county equalization, where we are required to hit fifty percent of true cash value. It's a state constitution requirement. And we, as equalization at the county level, review the assessors' work to make sure that in any classification in which they have a parcel identified, whether it be agricultural, commercial, industrial, and so on, we provide them either a sales study based on what the market is indicating from a two-year sales study timeframe, or we perform appraisals to determine what the ratio would be. So if they are not within the forty-nine to fifty percent, we would be asking the county Board of Commissioners to put a what we call a county factor to bring them to forty-nine to fifty percent. The good news is all of our assessors within Eldra County hit all of their ratios. They were able to properly establish land values and the other factors that would go into establishing where their level of assessment would be. So what that ends up being is this report that was put in your packet, and it's called the forty twenty-four, and it is the official document that in the columns will indicate where the March Border Review certified numbers came in for all the townships. Then it has what we would be requesting you guys as county to determine whether or not there has to be a factor applied in order for us to meet our forty-nine to fifty. So with all that being said, we ended in sorry, I had it here. Our overall valuation for Eldra County, which includes real and personal, which would be personal property would be any of the equipment that any businesses would need in order to run their business shelving. Not anything that can be licensed with the Department Secretary of State. So we ended out after our total state equalized value for the county is six hundred and ninety-seven million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand nine forty-two. So what that means is if we doubled that number, our county's value for property is just shy of one point three billion dollars for our true cash value for property and businesses. I provided you two sheets that sometimes is kind of just a nice informational, especially with what we're seeing for our market conditions with residential sales. We're seeing large increases, what people are willing to pay versus what maybe some of the locals are willing to pay. When you have individuals that are coming from out of the area that are feeling that some of the prices are affordable, they're paying more, and so border reviews can be rather active when individuals receive their assessment change notice and state, you know, there's no way people would pay this. But real quick, for like loose county, their assessments went up eighteen point four percent. Their taxable went up seven percent. Chippewa County went up fourteen point two one percent in their values. Their taxable went up eight point two. Mackinac County went up ten point two. Taxable went up six point six nine. Eldra County, we went up fifteen point eight six percent, and our taxable went up seven point seven six. And Schoolcraft County went up sixteen point five eight percent. Taxable value went up eleven point one five. Reason this can be important is you're wondering like, what are people willing to pay? How much new construction is going up in our county? So new construction and due to proposal A for uncapping the sales, that's what's impacting how much you saw for your taxable value increase. So whenever somebody's going out for a millage request to ask the voters of our county for any type of funding, this is how much more would be generated off the standard taxable value. Then I provided a second sheet that would just show you the growth between all of our municipalities within the county. So if you just were to look, the far right column was for twenty twenty-three's where they finalized out their taxable value, where we're at for twenty twenty-four, and that's where the seven point seven six percent came in, so you can kind of see which townships were seeing more of the growth and which ones were seeing a little bit more of the activity for uncappings. Do you have any questions for me? Or something that maybe I could explain, or if you need clarity on anything?
Well, I have a guy in Grand Marais who texted me. So his taxable value went up thirty percent.
That would have been the uncapping law. So in nineteen ninety-four, when the voters of Michigan passed Proposal A, part of that, the backside of this impacts anybody that is doing a transfer of ownership. So anybody that purchased property in the calendar year of twenty twenty-three and was considered an arms-length, meaning it's not a mother selling it to a daughter. It's not a first-degree exemption from blood lineage. The taxable value due to the state law uncaps and goes to the current assessed value. So if this property in question that the gentleman from Grand Marais reached out to you had been owned by an individual for several years, when you look at the one sheet where I was stating how much the assessed values went up, their taxable was capped and was only seeing the rate of inflation or five percent, whichever is less. So for many years, it was only like two percent, three percent. The last two years, the five percent cap actually kicked in to cap the taxable values. So you could have a situation where your assessed value is here, your taxable is here, just because of the transfer in ownership, it uncaps that taxable and goes right up to the current assessed. And unfortunately, our local border reviews and anybody in the state have no authority to deny or to stop that uncapping. So that would be something if they're real passionate about it, or they would have to reach out to any of our state politicians to see if they're going to ever come out with a new tax reform, basically.
Okay. He's ready to shoot his real gun.
Well, see, well, to be very honest, usually when it gets to the point where the local unit finds out that there was a transfer, it's too late for any type of educational at that point. It should be part of the parties, whether you're the real estate agent, title company, the mortgage company, whomever is helping to provide that. We've been talking about this for thirty years. And unfortunately, we haven't talked about it recently, so it's something that is catching a lot of the new buyers, especially individuals that are not from Michigan that have no idea how we tax and what happens. So we try to provide as much as we can to keep that education out there, but again, it kind of slips through the cracks, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Nope, I didn't know about that, and I'm going to be a new homeowner soon. I'm going to look into this.
Yeah, so it's definitely something you would want to check in.
Or I'm just going to keep it on land contract.
So I would also point out that if you are purchasing anything, make sure that your escrow company sets up your escrow based on the uncapped amount, not what the historical taxes were, because you're going to end up with a shortage in your mortgage payment.
So you don't get that letter that says, hey, you need to bring us as much money.
Yeah. Well, they should be using that number anyway, because it gets really screw up whether or not you can afford the house, but. Is that all? Yeah, I'm going to turn this back over to you. Thank you.
Court Street, Courthouse Curve, and Barnum Street Rear Entry Way Slab Repair is brave.
Is that so that we can do the generator? Or the?
Generator, we're going to do just because it's hazardous, because it has to be done.
And just generator stuck in my head.
The Barnum Street one is because it's a trip hazard.
Yes.
So now that we know it's a trip hazard, Brian had talked to Joel or whatever, and said, well, now you know it's a trip hazard, so now you have to fix it. So we need to get that fixed and the curb coming in the main entrance, while it's to the state specs, it's not a barrier-free curb, which makes it difficult for folks, especially in a wheelchair, to get in. And especially now with early voting and stuff, we're going to have more chance for it to be difficult for more people, so we need to just get that fixed, so we're not so we're not, you know, so people have an easy way to get in, so that's what those two are for, and then what Kelly mentioned is our generator for this building has never been able to run at full capacity. So when they come and they do the load test every year, they can't do the load test at a hundred percent like they're supposed to, because the fuel line is too small. It runs to the tank. It runs under that slab, so while it's torn up to be repaired, our pre-contractor is going to, our maintenance man and Brian will coordinate with them, so once they tear it up, he'll get that line replaced. We'll actually be able to use our generator at a hundred percent too, so. That's not part of this bid, but it's a beneficial byproduct of needing to fix our broken cement, so.
And that was help from Mike Focola that we found out about, or Neil.
Yeah, Neil brought the curb to our attention. It is our curb. It's not the city's curb, so we can go ahead and have that cut out and have it put in at the proper, it'd be a a slope instead of that curb, that J-curb that's out there now would be a slope and contractor, we only have the one bid. The contractors already met with, building inspector knows exactly what I don't remember what the exact rise over the distance has to be, but they're well aware of that, so we should be good to go once this is done.
All right. I was going to say, one bid, so.
Yeah, one bid for nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Where's that coming from?
Council approves, right?
You got to ask the dean questions.
I did the same thing at the committee meeting, to Pam. And that one, we are looking for a vote tonight, so that we can get.
Yeah, Brian said possibly could get going sooner before they lift weight restrictions, so sooner we can find a job and get ahead of.
Yeah.
Before the concrete contractor, before they can get to their big jobs, it might, so.
Come get this one to include.
They are asking for a
Make a motion to approve.
No second.
Need a roll call vote on that, correct, Joel? Roll call vote, please.
Chris Caparosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Chris Nelson?
Yes. For nine, the five-year rec plan. If it all come to the conclusion, we need to just push that off, move it to an item for next week's meeting?
And.
And we may have to move again if it can't be corrected at the time, so.
If the email is ASAP, we'll see, otherwise we'll discuss it next week.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should, I mean, I'd like to see it get done, so if they can come back and get the corrections done for us in time, if not, well.
Other way, it'll be an item next week. Thank you.
A lot of time and effort and we want to be right.
Absolutely.
Consent?
Yes.
Yes.
Otis Elevator Contract, five-year extension. Got to wait for my screen to catch up here, so I know where I'm at.
The only one, right, in the area with maybe? So we're just kind of.
Apparently, there was at one point, there was somebody else that was trying to, but that never really came to fruition, so. And have to have them maintained to keep it licensed by the state, so.
Hey, one free.
It used to be on a, it used to be even more expensive, because it was like on a, they charged like a per trip or something, instead of a flat fee. Do we have a dollar amount on that, Joel?
I said the current, nine thirty-nine. Did I include the percentages, the breaking?
Look, and I've got Otis's letter.
Right behind it. All the way back to two seventy-six.
So extension. Oh, and I jumped an E D of dates.
It's just the historical, not the whole forward.
All right, just so we know that. Turn this, that's right, you said that at the committee meetings, the same as it currently is, so. Any discussion? Consent?
Yep.
No.
Eagle and the M E D C Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. We talked at, and we talked at the committee meeting, I think before you got there, Kelly.
No, I was there for the.
Perfect.
I wasn't there for the video.
I was already getting six, so I was.
Discussion.
And you should have got it at the other one, so basically, we're it was told the room, the city was going to have one, we were going to have one, but it doesn't make sense to put a charging station for the tourists at the courthouse. We're better served, we decided in the committees, that we'd be better to serve with two of them in the downtown area where people can plug their cars in and still walk to the businesses and the attractions and stuff.
I want to say it was two and two.
Yeah, so it was two and two.
Now it's just two total?
That's all. We'd rather see the city get four of them.
In the higher traffic area?
In the higher traffic area where there's more tourists and stuff, so.
We have limited parking over here, too.
Right.
Tree trial and that, after school pickup.
Are there any private parties installing this? Like Billy Ramsey or?
Ah, there's three down at Hillside, I think, currently.
Hillside, yeah, town.
Outside of that, I don't think there's any others right now. And these all come through Eagle and M E D C, right? Because, you know, it's not a we don't have any cash outlay on these, so just the fact that we're basically saying that we'd rather see them put in a more useful, high-traffic area than up here. Any discussion? Consensus?
Yep. Yeah.
Number twelve.
Just on the record, I'm sorry, two is the evil consensus under. Consensus under.
Yes, yes, all of us see it all. Or wherever their plan is to put them, but yeah. Good?
Good.
Uh number twelve, Heather Daubers Dean's Library Board Resignation. Don't see it put in pretty straightforward, she wants to get off the library board, so.
Yeah.
She's already.
She's already, she's really already off it, and I believe, don't you already have it advertised on the website too, Joel?
I did.
You did, trying to get.
This is just to put it down that she's resigned, so that when it comes up to fill it.
We accepted her resignation. Consensus?
Yeah.
Cost savings ideas and revenue sources. Anybody? Let me, you know, come back with some pressure more. Unfinished business. Cell locks in the jail. We spent a lot of time in our police and grounds meeting. And uh. I don't remember, Rick, if you got the the rest, I think you got it even in that executive meeting, but. We were prepared to move forward with, what was it, a hundred and forty thousand dollar bid to retrofit the locks over any old old portion of the jail. We'd had two bids from two companies in California, pretty similar bids, pretty similar work. Then come to light that we've got a lot more other problems in that same department, uh there's some concern. That retrofitting these locks. That we would also then have to turn around and replace other systems that run through the door frames. As well as a serious concern that we're gonna have to replace the door frames and doors themselves. We've gotten a bid from the third company. That would have increased the bid by what, two hundred and twenty thousand, so we're talking. Because their their bid to replace each of the nine doors that we have bid, each door is twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, along with the intercom system, the intercom system. Is very bad, very unsafe, you know, they can't, it's hard to communicate. After a serious discussion with the jail administrator, with the sheriff. With our maintenance man, uh right now, the locking system that is currently on those old doors. The parts are no longer produced, they've been buying the siliconites that actually drive the lock on eBay used. They've got, you know, they've got a box of parts, if something goes wrong, they scavenge through and they try and get it working again. They came up with a couple of backup plans. So we made this, with the recommendation coming out of the committee, is that we push this off for approximately twelve months. And try and be able to secure, there was an M M R aid grant available for fifty thousand dollars. We're looking at some of the different funds and then to look into trying to secure so we can do this in one shot, do it right. Instead of going ahead with a hundred and forty thousand dollar project to then in a year or two years, basically throw it in the scrap bin. And still have to pay another three hundred thousand dollars. So we don't wanna. The staff feels that we can make it another twelve months. You know, they're gonna have to be a little extra vigil and a little extra careful with some of the things they do to make sure that doors are locked properly and whatnot, but. So, yeah, exactly. Don't push hard, make sure it locks. So, yeah, it was a tough call on the recommendation, but the recommendation coming out of the committee is to go ahead. And postpone for twelve months, the administrator is gonna reach out to the company and see how long they will. With that information that we intend to do it, but we need more time than, you know, we're not gonna find the funding in thirty, sixty or ninety days. We're gonna have to do some serious.
Try to see if they can hold the bid at that for the next. Two months or whatever, but.
If we're really lucky, maybe they'll hold it for twelve months, but that's pretty much a pipe dream, and we know that, but, you know.
It's been a long time coming, so having this conversation and putting it in the book that we'd like to do it soon. It's not as best as we can do right now. Make sure that we have it all. Done. Definitely don't wanna do all the work with the locks and then turn around and they don't fit the new doors and you have to put all the work into it again, so like you said. Made it more sense.
Any other discussion? So we are going to. Long-term table, this, I guess is.
Yeah, budget issue for.
Yeah. Find the money and extra budget for it, so. Consensus?
Yep.
No.
Financial matters. Procreation, one and two. L M A S for their quarterly enforcement. January through March on the first one, April through June on the second. Any discussion or questions? Consensus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Uh board bills. You signed off on them, I I looked them over before I had to leave and they looked at the main.
No idea, you sent me through.
I had to leave.
Okay.
I had an appointment.
But everything looked good on those, so we recommended approving the board bills. Consensus?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then approved financial reports for all funds, trial balances are made available or in our packet. Any questions or discussions there? Consent?
Yep.
Resolutions. Twenty twenty-four dash three, continue the nine one one surcharge of forty-two cents where it has been. Any discussion or questions? Nope, same. Consensus?
Yes.
Committee reports. Devin?
Look at the hat and Q pad.
What are they, what are they up to for, they're having, clicking on material management yet for us?
Nope, we just pretty much signed off on their uh policy. We went through their whole policy and rules and such and redid them completely, I'm so glad that's over with, so. That's been fun, we're doing uh. Send it out to everybody and we'll hopefully get it all throughed. On the next meeting that everybody will be at. If you guys seen it, the last big meeting, so um other than that. That's pretty much it, there wasn't any movement really with the. Words.
Your attorney?
No, the materials.
Oh, materials. The Zoom meeting that was early on Tuesday was uh. With the director of the Marquette Recycling Facility.
Yeah.
Solid waste folks. Basically, they're looking to make sure, their hope is that no more of the recycling materials as this progresses. Gets shipped out of state instead of to the facility that they have that can hardly handle all of it. Uh they recently lost just because of the collector in the hall or uh waste management. They got them in Dominica and stuff, it's all now going into Wisconsin because waste management's gotta deal with somebody in Wisconsin. So he said, they're they're basically starving for material for the, they've got a single stream recycling machine that. They're having a hard time keeping it fed right now, so they're just looking to make sure that as this progresses. Everybody's on board with, you know, why wouldn't we send it keeping at the facility that we already have up and running?
Yeah.
And I told him that. That was my personal assumption that, you know.
This is to keep everything here.
We have a facility that can handle it, why would we?
Not use it.
Not use it.
Um and I know that uh Eagle is actually using Q pad's six county plan. As on their on their site right now as an example of. If you'd like to do a multi-county plan, here's one that seems to be a good look, and I told him, I said, well, you better get your stamp on that. You guys came up with it, so now they got it on their site.
Tell Eagle we want a percentage. An extra percentage for helping them out.
Otherwise, they got everybody signed off in all six counties, so now it's just waiting for their next.
The next step in the plans.
Yeah. On that.
Rick?
Uh the pathways. Uh. Were canceled because of a blizzard.
What?
Over there in Grand Canyon, the sun is shining. But uh anyway, that meeting is rescheduled for the seventeenth. And that's well it.
The one thing I had were. Uh. From the airport, we'll go, if I can get all my ducks in a row and get the last updates from. The advisory committee folks, will at least get, wanna at least try and get us to look at. Camping portion of the airport policy, so that we can allow pilot camping, so we can start getting. We've got some more prep work we need to do before we can. What they're looking at is. Well, some of them will camp under their wing, but there's that, we own, we own the chunk of woods at the, if you use the northeast section there. Off the end of the runway, and it's. Got a lot of gaps in it already, so real easy to smooth some stuff out there, so they can. Basically, they can tie their planes down right there at the wood line, there'll be a, there's an indent of area there where they're. They can tie the plane down, then they just take their little tent out of their plane and they go, they get, you know, go fifty feet back into one of the little cleared out spots for their tent down for the night. Instead of being right out in the middle of the field, so, you know, apparently that's a. With this art, with the RAF and with these recreational guys, a lot of them really seem to enjoy that, so. And the reason for us to do that is to drive donations to help keep funding our airport. So we can not use any taxpayer dollars on it, so that's a really good potential revenue stream. After talking with our advisory folks. In the committee and then in the regular committee, and then also with some of them that was able to be with one of the directors from the RAF as well. We had already pretty much thought that instead of trying to charge a fee, it would be better off. Asking for donations because people are more willing to. You tell them, well, it's five dollars a night, they're gonna pay their five dollars and that'll be it, but.
By donation.
By donation, you know. They have a really good two nights, they're, you know, they might throw, they're gonna throw twenty or fifty dollars in instead.
Um.
Places they've worked before, they get a much higher amount back in by donation from these folks, so.
Um. I was gonna say, we also talked on the advisory board and about the upcoming July.
Yep.
Uh the potential Young Eagles or they're talking, calling it a handly field day that we could make an annual event.
Yeah, and which. Yeah, to have it as, yeah, have it as an annual event. And not just the Young Eagles flights, there's some folks in the RAF that are willing to come and do some demonstrations of like short field takeoff and landings. And some other things in conjunction with. Many other ideas have been floated for. Adding to and stuff in the future, so, you know, again, great way to keep. You know. You know, that's a day that, even if you don't have a kid that's gonna fly. We're all giant children. Who doesn't like, wanna stand there and watch all these different planes come in and out, you know, and, because everyone's different, it's not like you're watching the same, you know. There's just so many, so much variety, it's.
And then I believe they're talking to the Mountain, you know, singing.
Yep.
Bay Trail Network, and um we're talking about a dog area. So that we can.
Possibly, yeah.
The possibility of having the dog walk up there and everything that everybody's.
But back off, not on the field. In the wooded area there on the other end of the, on the south end, maybe, we'll see how that. We've got some I's and T's to dot and cross on that.
So as just the airport, I think it's just great that everybody who is on that advisory committee and us are just really looking to. Not put this burden of the airport on anybody in the town, near city, county. We're not gonna make it a big commercial airline, it's gonna stay small and. The community's gonna be really involved in being part of it, not just planes, I think, so I think it's really heading in a good direction.
The mountain bike folks were actually at the finance committee meeting. They got their, they got their times a little crisscrossed. Do things. They're hoping that eventually we can. The county can provide some funding for them. So we talked about that a little bit and said, you know, we'll have to. Run that back through the committees and see where we come out for like next year's budget and stuff like that, but, you know, definitely worth looking into, they do a lot of. Yeah, they draw, they actually draw a lot of tourists to come just to ride their bikes and stuff, so they were also asking about. Because they have a loop that already goes. In the north, it passes along just outside the airport property through the forest service property on the west end, comes out to the Chamberlain. And then loops and then goes back down thirteen, they've been looking to make a connection there. Well, they didn't realize that we don't, there's a drop off at the north end, we don't own that last. I don't know, five, six hundred feet, it already belongs to the Forest Service. So they're gonna check on, they're gonna do some checking on that, see if they can make a connection there, or if they can't, you know. I don't see why at some point we can't work out so they can clear up.
Okay.
Mountain Bike Trail through the edge on that north corner there, I mean, you're talking, there's no way it would interfere with uh. With aviation, you know. To be able to, then they'd be able to have that, and whether the gal was here said, they're really looking for that, they'd like to have. Kind of a beginner's loop because it's pretty. That loop around the airport, I mean, granted, there's a little bit of change, but it's relatively flat. So there's no big hills, there's nothing like that for folks that maybe aren't up to all the hills and stuff, so. Well, definitely something to check with the Forest Service and then get back to this if you. If they. Can't get that worked out. Well, that was a good discussion with them, and that's all I had for committee stuff. Anybody remember anything else? Just in case, can all that go sometimes. Uh number eighteen, correspondence.
Our debt elimination plan was approved by the state for the resolution that we passed last month. We have two resolutions, one from LaPierre County. For Freedom Home School and another from Grand Traverse in support of Senate Bill six sixty-two. There's. Uh Michigan State University Extension Training, it's all the way down into nominee, that's for mental. Youth Mental Health First Aid, and then they're also looking for a tribal health extension educator. In the Bay Mills Health Center, we do that in our packet. And finally, from June Father's Summer concerning the other county renewable energy solutions. And they are looking to present to us. They do, so. Be looking out for that. Okay, that's it.
Or comments, Rick?
Yeah, um. I've been working with Pam a little bit and the township board and. Regarding uh housing, and they will be having a meeting tomorrow. Uh I had met with the planning commission board chairman and. Two of the board members and uh. There's certain loops that they have to. Go through to donate or sell public property, but they do have a. Parcel that they're interested in. And have you, has Sherry contacted you?
She did, she said she had another question, but when I called back, there wasn't an answer, so I would talk to her, yes.
Okay.
I'll flag in.
Should be seeing her tomorrow, so. Then uh I was kind of, I went to the uh. News and Township Board Meeting last week. And um these uh. They've been doing a lot of solar installation projects. Throughout, I mean, I actually met people in Cleveland, Peninsula Solar. And they, their board vote. And they, their board voted to, um, solarize the township building. Let's need another experiment. That's all I have.
Nope, nothing on my end today.
Appreciate everybody looking out for us on the rec plan. So we wanna get it right because we don't, there's nothing currently in the works. It's just a framework so that if something does come up, because right now the county does not own any recreation facilities. But there is also, I know, we've thought there's a possibility that some, we may be able to piggyback the townships. Then there has to be, there's a whole nother layer of agreements that have to be, because the county has to control the property and it gets real technical and tedious, but at least there's a path there then, so, yeah, we don't wanna leave anybody out because we don't know in the next five years what's gonna become available that we might wanna try and do, so thank you for all that, um. Yeah, I think that's about it on mine, so. Staff comments, Joel?
I have nothing.
Sherri?
Nothing.
Pam?
I have a couple of things, maybe you can help with those. First of all, we have, we already applied for the eight hundred, almost eight hundred thousand dollar grant to the land, for the land bank. And our land bank was able to get almost eight hundred thousand. So the two lighted buildings in Anoda Township, we have it scheduled to come down around April twelfth right now. So you'll see those come down and then the other half, almost half a million for, um, the stabilization of the old fire hall, we're gonna put that on, out on bid the next week or two. And then, so hopefully that will get started sooner than later. So that takes care of that project, sounds easy, and then, um, they also had another five hundred thousand dollar grant that, that they said our, our land bank could apply for. So like a five more projects included in that, and that had to be submitted by March thirty-first, so we got everything in, so we should be hearing.
Which two in older towns did you get this plan down?
It's the two, I don't even know what, what the address is, but right on, when you go past, run where the tile is, on the opposite side.
Okay.
Those two, there's two big, really bad.
Yep.
Falling down kinda.
Yep.
So both of those are going to be nothing, and the service department, Todd said he'll have, um, someone out there with a drone. And they'll take pictures before and then after.
Nice, it'd be nice to be able to see that.
Right, and the state will, state land bank will be happy to see the pictures too, so everything. I didn't know, hmm, you can say it all, I think so, so.
Thank you for all your hard work getting all that stuff secured.
It'll be nice when it gets done. Pam is a treasure to us.
Um, not much going on, I mean, a lot's going on, we're just, uh.
There's not much you can tell us, that's all.
Yeah, it's busy.
You understand that.
It's busier than I anticipated, it's busier than last year at this time. So we're trying to keep up with all of that, um, our rest rates have rebounded after the last quarter's fall down and, um, we're seeing a lot of high severity felonies coming in. Um, you know, we had our, uh, big, um, child, um, ghost operation that brought in two twenty-year felonies. And since that time, we've gotten two more on drug traffickers, so lots of work, they're all remaining district court, all of those defendants. Which means there's a lot of work that needs to get done on them in the next couple of weeks. We also are scheduled to be in file on Monday for a single-day jury trial on a, a simple assault case, which should be really interesting, invite everybody to attend. Uh, jury selection should be over by, by eleven, and then after that, it's just argument and, uh, witnesses, which is the fun part, so if you can stop by, stop by.
Sam?
We got nothing.
Eric?
No news.
Barry? Thank you all, as always. We'll bring it up again for brief public comment.
Yes, Roy. I, uh, neglected to, I didn't think about it, but, uh, the, in the Terry area, the, the baseball field and pavilions and a little playground in the back and the BMX track, that's, that's all Lions Club property and it's on the tax rolls. So, I don't know if that means anything for you guys or not, but, but I didn't, I failed to tell you that and it just came through my head here in one of those.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Real quick one, I'd just like to acknowledge Mr. Nettleton's, um, really, really well-done meeting. He explained things very well and, and went through everything and answered all the questions without being asked, um. Well done, Mr. Nettleton, that's all I'm here, that's all I can say.
Big love and wanted you to do it.
Any other public comment? Yes, Bryce?
Yeah, so, uh, Cam, uh, Community Action Elder Marquette, um, I know that they don't have a meeting for a while, but, um, uh, I'm obviously not happy with how that situation's going, nor should literally any human being that understands how to add or have any understanding of, of like, you know, any sunshine laws. Um, this board, new or old, has made efforts, as well as the county staff has really made efforts the last couple of years to, you know, kind of include more discussion, include more transparency through, you know, being in the public eyes, um, to the best of their abilities and, um, have made that a value, and I just wanna say that as a citizen that lives in Alde County that used to live in Marquette County, that is not a value that Marquette County people have, especially in a lot of their elected roles. So please, when that next meeting happens, give them the absolute hell that they deserve. And rip them a new one, you have the support of the people in Alde County that understand how this goes and you guys are fighting for all transparency in that case, so please be prepared and, and, and show them what transparency looks like.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I mean, none, we rule again, thank you all.